Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the regular City Council Study Session of Tuesday, December 12, 2023. I now call the meeting to order. Let's all stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance together.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, united in the invisible liberty of us all.
Okay. We're going to have somebody sing the National Anthem, but she chickened out. So, Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Mr. Mayor, the record will reflect that all council members are present except for Councilmember Harper, who is absent.
Okay. So now, at the beginning of the meeting, we do our public comment. And it's a little bit different during the study sessions. It's two minutes instead of three minutes. So we're going to give a ding at the one-minute mark, right, Madam Clerk? Can we do ding at the one-minute mark? So please wrap up. And normally with public comments for a regular meeting, you could speak about anything that's not on the agenda. It's exactly reversed for the study session. You can only talk about things that are on the agenda. And for the purposes of considering that, if you haven't seen the agenda, this is a study session regarding the phased rollout of the city's housing element programs and an update regarding the Fairview Developmental Center specific plan effort. So pretty much if you touch the concept of housing in general or Fairview Developmental Center, you'll be good to go on your public comments. So with that, we'll open it up first to people in the chambers, and then we'll go to Zoom. Going once, going twice. Sold in the chambers. Anybody on Zoom?
Yes. Mark Vuksevich, please.
Mr. Vuksevich, you have the floor. Mark, are you with us?
He's unmuted, but we can't hear you, Mark.
Let me just check one thing.
Okay. If there's somebody else, is there anybody else on Zoom or just Mark that wants to speak?
Mr. Mayor, could we give it one more time to the chambers?
Sure.
I'm just not sure that everyone was totally clear that if you want to speak tonight at all about anything we're covering on the agenda, now is the time to talk. We do it before the presentation.
Right. Oh, there's Mark.
I think Zoom is muted for all persons.
Well, why don't you, you want to step up and speak?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Well...
We have more speakers.
Councilmember Mars, right, too. Speak now or forever. Hold your peace. Yes. And you can come up, you know, if you want to speak in the chambers.
Cynthia McDonald?
Cynthia McDonald, you have the floor.
Okay. By the way, the sound on Zoom was not working until a few seconds ago. So people may not know what's going on. Good evening. Cynthia McDonald, Costa Mesa resident. The agenda puts on rose-colored glasses because it fails to disclose that the city's housing element is out of compliance. The HDD has not, quote, "approved" the housing element because it can't approve it unless it is in compliance. The language in the May letter from the HDD is clear: "Complete the programs, adhere to the necessary reporting requirements in a timely manner, and then the HDD will approve it by declaring it in compliance." Last night, the Planning Commission took a step towards completing one of the programs, but the product, the draft IHO, is so weak that it will only produce a modicum of affordable units. And it makes me wonder if the HDD will consider it a good-faith effort to complete Program 2A. The HDD clearly didn't like the use of the word "consider" with respect to completing the program goals, and I doubt a half-hearted attempt at an IHO will impress it either. With respect to the outreach meetings for the FDC-specific plan, those outreach meetings need to be recorded, particularly since most members of the City Council and Planning Commission don't seem interested in attending. What is missing are many comments by the public that aren't recorded by staff or the consultant, such as one gentleman who protested about the way the meeting was conducted because he didn't trust staff to accurately record comments or represent his opinion. The context of the comments isn't provided in the report either, and as someone who's attended the meetings, the filtering by staff and the consultant is not entirely accurate. Please appoint a Citizens Advisory Committee for the FDC-specific plan. It would enhance the democratic process by increasing transparency and building trust with the community. It would ensure that local perspectives are considered, and that would ultimately lead to a more robust and community-supported plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done.
Kathy Esfahani, please.
Ms. Esfahani, you have the floor. And by the way, she said that it didn't come on, the sound didn't come on in Zoom. So before she said that, we did the welcome, we did the roll call, we did the Pledge of Allegiance, we called for public comments. Nobody showed up from the chambers. We tried again, still nobody showed up. And then we had Cynthia's comment that she just made. So everybody's dated down, both on Zoom and in the chambers. And with that, Ms. Esfahani, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that clarification. I was panicking on my end because there was no sound. So I guess I just have two comments to make. It's always difficult to comment before there's been any sort of presentation. But I'm distressed about the inclusionary zoning ordinance that looks like it's coming forward to City Council. It's been, the affordability requirements have been whittled down so dramatically that I agree with Cynthia, there will be a paltry amount of affordable housing that gets produced if you stick with the current plan of, in very high-density housing of over 60 units per acre, only requiring either 11% low income or 7% very-low income. That's just, to me, it makes no sense in terms of the vast need for affordable housing we have in our community and the fact that a much more robust ordinance right next door in Santa Ana is very effectively producing, it's producing affordable housing, but it's also not interfering with market-rate housing. And I would like to point out that the related California's proposed development right across the South Coast Plaza, it's in Santa Ana, but it's on Bristol, you know, bordered by Sunflower and MacArthur. And that is a proposal for mixed-use development, high-density residential, that will be replacing existing businesses. And the affordability requirements of the city of Santa Ana are not blocking or not deterring that development. I don't think there's any way Costa Mesa should require less than Santa Ana, given our needs and the fact that our land is more valuable. It will...
Ms. Esfahani, that's your two minutes. Thank you.
Are there speakers, Mr. Mayor?
No other speakers? All right. So, Mark?
Would you like?
Yeah, go ahead. You can speak.
Good evening, Council. I'm going to reiterate just some of the comments I made to the Planning Commission yesterday regarding the IHO. Overall, and some of the staff, I think, was here yesterday or was going to hear this again, but overall, looking at what's being proposed by staff at the moment, I'd give it about a B-, it's not bad. I think it's honestly pretty good. And so the bulk of my comments are related to just economies of scale and competitive advantage, and I think those are some of the things that I want to think about with the IHO. So first and foremost, I want to make sure that we raise the minimum project size. I think doing an IHO is incredibly challenging and requiring affordable units on small projects. So right now, our project size is 10 units. I would rather have that be starting out about 30, 40 units. I think that's when that starts penciling out better, the economies of scale start making sense better. Same with small lots. I would say lots like under one acre of size don't really make sense to have an IHO. Small lots in general are just very hard to develop housing on. And frankly, it's my preferred type of housing, is those European small-lot developments. And if we're going to make it even more challenging, it's not going to bring the type of development we want. If you want to do an IHO, put it on those big-box, you know, sort of housing developments that have, you know, these big sites to work with. Lastly, regarding the actual percentages, I would advocate for slightly lower percentages. Instead of 11 in seven, going for five in 10, which would put us on par with kind of matching, having competitive advantage with Huntington Beach, which has those exact same numbers. And so that, because developers don't really care where they're building, and so we want to make sure they're building in Costa Mesa, not choosing a different place like Huntington Beach to build. And also, you know, in a time of high interest rates, in a time of challenging, you know, home building, we want to make sure, you know, homes are still being built, even in the challenging times. And that's why I would urge a slightly more conservative approach than what's currently being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody? So you're welcome to come on up. Come on up. Yeah, I mean, we'll reopen the chambers if people want to speak. We only had three people, so...
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Stevens and council members and the rest of the staff. I'm concerned, I live in College Park, and if, obviously, you're going to be building this, correct? Anyway, my concern is traffic, crime. A lot of agencies are having a hard time finding officers to hire, and what is going to be done to consider to keep the crime down? Also, the traffic, you only have one entrance and exit over a Fairview and Harbor. That's impossible. The traffic on Harbor already is horrendous, and by adding all these extra homes and units, it's going to make it a lot worse. I mean, I have to drive all the way down to the light there at Fair to make a left to get into the College Park development. And I think we have five or seven exits and entrances in the northern part of College Park, and I think about the same in the southern part of College Park. So my concerns are the traffic, the crime. Also, three to seven stories, it's awful. Now, you know, we had this discussion maybe a year or two ago over there where Hattie's Pizza used to be, and they were going to develop homes there. And a lot of the people in College Park and surrounding area did not want to have to deal with minimum parking space and having people come into our area to park. Also, our properties in College Park are quite valuable.
Thanks. Thanks. That's your two minutes. Thank you. Okay. That's it. Closed public comment. All right. Then we have our one-study-session item. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
Study Session Regarding the Phased Rollout of the City's Housing Element Programs and Update Regarding the Fairview Developmental Center Specific Plan Effort. Presentation by Ms. Lee.
Ms. Lee, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. It's my pleasure this evening to present an informational item on the housing element implementation and the phased rollout of our housing element programs, as well as a more detailed discussion of our Fairview Developmental Center specific plan update. I'm going to start this evening by introducing your Economic and Development Services team. I have with me tonight Scott Drapkin, our Assistant Director of Development Services. We have Sheri Banderdusen, who's an interim Assistant Director for us, working specifically on the Fairview Developmental Center project. And we also have Paivon Nothe Wanjwongsi, who is our Principal Planner. She's in our audience tonight. All of these folks have been very instrumental in bringing all of our housing programs up to this point to fruition. We also have tonight PlaceWorks, who is our consultant retained specifically for the Fairview Developmental Center project. Tonight's presentation will be in two parts. Our first part will focus on a discussion of our phased housing element implementation, and then I will turn it over to Karen Gully, who is our Project Lead from PlaceWorks, and she'll be presenting this evening, as well as her team members, regarding the Fairview Developmental Center.
Okay. Before you start, I just want to tell the people in the audience, people on Zoom, so it's a study session, which means a few things. It means that we dress more informally, we speak more informally, we can call each other by our first names, and nobody will be offended, and we don't vote on anything. We're not voting on anything tonight. It's purely informational for us to ask questions and receive information. So with that, so that it doesn't mess up people's expectations, I wanted to say that. Please continue.
Thank you. So in the way of background to start this evening's conversation, as you all are well aware, the city received a regional housing needs assessment allocation, or RENA allocation, of 11,760 units, and that number was intended to represent the portion of the city's projected regional need. Although the total is 11,760 units, a large portion of those units do fall within affordable housing categories, so very-low-income, low-income, and moderate-income housing. The city is not required to construct this number of units, but we are required by state law to establish these zoning and programs, put those programs in place that will facilitate housing consistent with our RENA allocation. The city adopted its housing element in November of 2022. The housing element specifically identifies programs or specific actions that would provide additional housing opportunities in the community, that remove governmental constraints to affordable housing, that improve the condition of existing housing, and also provide equal housing opportunities for all residents. The California Department of Housing and Community Development, also called HCD, approved our housing element on May 9, 2023. The state's May 9 letter is posted online on the city's housing element webpage. And in addition to finding that the city's housing element meets all statutory requirements of housing element law, it also reiterates the state's expectation that the city implement the housing element programs in a timely manner, and it also reiterates the state's authority to enforce housing element law, and specifically to find the city's housing element out of compliance for any action or lack thereof that isn't consistent with the housing element. The housing element itself lists 47 programs to be completed by the city within the next eight-year planning period, and the majority of those 47 programs have deadlines that are within the next two to three years. The good news is that the city has been very proactive, and although the housing element was only approved by the state in May earlier this year, we've already completed several housing element programs, and we also have several more that are already underway. I'll review these briefly tonight, because I think you're aware of most of them. The city planned for its bridge shelter, and the council recently approved an expansion of that shelter to provide additional beds and services for individuals experiencing homelessness in Costa Mesa. We also have our accessory dwelling unit program. The city has updated its ordinances in compliance with state law, and we have also provided a user-friendly online guide to developing an ADU in Costa Mesa. We've also consulted with four plan-check services to expedite plan-check for ADUs in the community, and we also have under-review, pre-approved plans as a possibility for the future, along with some other incentives for ADU programs. We also have our Project Home Key project, the motel conversion of our Motel 6 into affordable housing for our community. And last but not least, we also had a partnership with Families Forward and HomeAid Orange County to provide eight affordable units at the bungalows locally, which is a very important partnership for the city. In addition, staff has already retained a parking consultant and have begun updating our residential parking standards, and we'll be bringing that zoning code update to the Planning Commission and City Council early next year. We've also implemented and completed Program 3G of the housing element, which was required by the state to allow for the city to rezone property necessary to promote housing opportunities in Costa Mesa, and that was Measure K. We've also kicked off the Affordable Housing Ordinance, which was identified as a council priority and also a housing element goal. The city retained Kaiser Marston Associates last year. KMA has completed the financial evaluation necessary to move forward with an Affordable Housing Ordinance. We've held two joint Planning Commission-City Council study sessions on the topic, 17 stakeholders meetings. We've prepared a draft ordinance that we think reflects well and will be successful for our community, and we presented that ordinance last night to our Planning Commission, and they recommended first reading to the council, and we intend to bring that ordinance to you at the beginning of next year. We also have the Jamboree Housing Project located on the city's senior center property. That application was actually submitted to the city following an exclusive negotiating agreement with Jamboree Housing. Since then, Jamboree Housing has retooled its funding sources and tweaked the scope of work for the project a little bit, but they very recently submitted updated plans back to the city, and we intend to bring that project forward to the council for its preliminary screening also early next year. And last but not least, we have the Fairview Developmental Center specific plan. Staff has retained PlaceWorks as our expert consulting firm, and we held our first community engagement meeting last month. And the second part of this study session will be a detailed update regarding the Fairview Developmental Center specific plan. In addition to these efforts that are specifically housing element programs, staff is continuing to process as part of our day-to-day operations housing development projects from housing developers in our community. For example, we have the One Metro West project and also the Hive Live project that are both multifamily residential projects north of the 405. So to complete our housing programs in a timely and efficient manner, there are 47 of them. As I said, many of them are already underway. We have sorted our housing programs really into two categories. The first category is building upon existing programs that the city already has, and those programs really involve residential assistance programs, a focus on housing outreach programs and partnerships, zoning code updates specifically focused on our housing processes and residential standards, and also a review of fees applicable to housing projects. The second category of housing programs really fall into this idea of creating a new framework for new housing projects on corridor revitalization. And in that category, we're focusing on visioning and community engagement, developing objective design standards, both citywide and neighborhood-based, and a general plan update, rezoning, and a program environmental impact report, all which are necessary to rezone housing opportunity sites consistent with our housing program. Both of these categories of projects are very, very resource-intensive. Our existing staff will be focusing on those items that build upon our existing programs, and we are also augmenting our staff with both contract planners, onboarding new staff members filling vacancies, and onboarding consultant teams. Between these two programs, we expect that both our existing staff and our consultant teams will be at full capacity for the next two to three years, and probably more likely in the three-year timeline. So I wanted to deep-dive a little into this idea of creating the framework for new housing and corridor revitalization. In Costa Mesa, we have several layers of zoning and development standards that ultimately dictate what types of housing projects can move forward. We have our general plan, that is a high-level land use and circulation policy document. We also have specific plans in various locations throughout the community. The most common that we tend to discuss here are the North Costa Mesa specific plan, as well as the Fairview Developmental Center specific plan, which is a new specific plan we're developing. There are actually several specific plans located throughout the city. And those specific plans include zoning and development standards for areas within the city. We also have our regular zoning code, and in addition to that, we have urban plans and overlays, which have, on top of our base zoning, additional options for development of housing and specific development standards that are specific to those sub-areas. So it's a very complex zoning scheme in Costa Mesa. Our goal with the general plan update, rezoning, and program EIR, consistent with our housing element, is to simplify and integrate all of those documents and policies so that it's more streamlined and more easily understandable. And ultimately, the goal is to rezone our housing opportunity sites so that we can be found in compliance with state law, but also to do that in the context of corridor planning and in a way that's compatible with our existing neighborhoods. So those are really the pieces of the puzzle that need to fit together to make a cohesive housing program and housing policy in Costa Mesa. It's a very big undertaking, and it will take an organizational focus in order to complete these projects and the timelines that we have allotted. So I'm not going to focus on this too much, but I wanted to show it to you tonight because this is essentially, we have much more detailed versions of these milestone schedules that we use for project planning purposes and to ensure that we're allocating the right resources to these projects so that we can complete them on time. But essentially, what I'd like you to focus on is the fact that we already have our residential assistance programs underway, we already have our housing outreach programs underway using existing staff, we have zoning code updates that are already underway, and the ones that will come in the future, that will be the focus of our existing staff members, as well as a review of planning application fees. Our advanced planning team, which honestly, at this point, consists of Paivon, who is in our audience this evening, and we have reallocated existing staff from our entitlement section over to advanced planning so that we can complete many of these projects. But my point to you is that we will be bringing on consultants and contract project managers and filling our staff vacancies in order to carry this workload. A lot of city staff for day-to-day operations, Costa Mesa is no different. We staff for day-to-day operations. This is well above and beyond that, so we are going to augment our team, and we'll need to do that. This is our second page of our milestone schedule examples. This is really focusing on our Affordable Housing Ordinance, our visioning and objective design standards, and our general plan update and rezoning and EIR efforts. Those will all be new staff and consultants, and ultimately, we expect it to go through the end of 2026 in terms of the project timeline. Opportunities and resources. We are already well ahead of many cities in that the city council has already set aside $2.4 million specifically to implement our housing and visioning programs in the housing element. We also have grant funds. We received $3.5 million to implement the Fairview Developmental Center specific plan. We also received $310,000 in SB2 funds, which were expended completely... the end of 2026 in terms of the project timeline. Opportunities and resources. We are already well ahead of many cities in that the city council has already set aside $2.4 million specifically to implement our housing and visioning programs in the Housing Element. We also have grant funds. We received $3.5 million to implement the Fairview Developmental Center specific plan. We also received $310,000 in SB2 funds, which were expended completing our Housing Element update and other related expenses, and we have $500,000 in LEAP funds that are being used to create our Affordable Housing Ordinance, and ultimately, they'll be allocated towards our visioning and general plan update. As I said, we already have our existing and continued high work volume, and as a result, most of our existing staff are already fully allocated to our day-to-day operations, but the department is also continuing to rebuild post-COVID. As many of you know, we had a lot of our experienced staff members, Willa Bowns-Kaleen, Minu Ashabi, many of our senior staff are retired post-COVID or just before, and so we've been rebuilding the department and filling those staff vacancies ever since. We are bringing a new Planning and Sustainable Development Manager onboard, and we've just completed that recruitment, and we will also be filling multiple senior planner vacancies in the department to make sure that we can carry these projects forward. Similar to the Fairview Developmental Center work effort, we will bring consultants and project managers onboard specifically to manage these projects. In terms of next steps, and before I turn it over to Karen Gully to deep dive into our Fairview Developmental Center plan, we will be completing the Affordable Housing Ordinance in early 2024 and bringing that ordinance to council for consideration. We'll also be continuing our community engagement activities and developing land use alternatives for the FDC project in early 2024. We have developed a request for proposals for visioning and objective design standards that will also be released in early 2024, and we have a companion RFP for the general plan rezoning and EIR efforts also ready to be released in early 2024. And with that, we'll continue to make sure that we have the right resources in the right places to continue with these projects. So that is my update this evening. I'd like to take any questions now, if that's okay, on this first part of the presentation, and after that, I will turn it over to Karen Gully.
Counsel?
Yes, Mayor Protem. I'm sorry, Jeff.
Okay, John. Thank you, Miss Lee, Jennifer. I still like to be a bit formal. And thank you for going into detail on, in particular, the framework, because I think that's important. I'm going to ask you another question, which is to go a little bit deeper on this and more for the public's understanding. What is it about our general plan that makes it unique or a little bit problematic in that we can't just do a simple rezoning like HCD would like and other cities can? We actually have to do a full general plan update as well as a zoning code update concurrently?
Yes, I think something unique about Costa Mesa that you don't see in every city. We actually have our development density ranges and also our floor area ratio limits, which are tools that the planning community uses to control density and intensity of development. Most cities have those development standards and ranges in their zoning code. We actually have them in our general plan. We also have trip budget limits that primarily apply in the area north of the 405, but we do have trip budgets, and essentially, it's a, think of it as a floating trip budget so that in a certain area, there's a number of vehicle trips cap, so that even if you're allowed to develop more in terms of number of residential units, the trip budget, a lot of times, will limit what you can actually develop north of the 405. So in order to change the zoning, to allow for the residential densities and the types of housing that we've been talking about promoting in Costa Mesa to meet our RENA allocation, you would have to amend both the general plan as well as the zoning code at the same time.
Okay. And the follow-up to that is, have we had any conversations with HCD yet about this unique situation and ways to kind of navigate, given the status of our Housing Element?
We've had those conversations. Frankly, I think HCD is looking at every city in a very sort of transactional sense. They're looking for Housing Element compliance, they're looking to find our Housing Element in compliance when we complete the rezoning, but there's not a lot of flexibility from their perspective. They're looking for us to complete the rezoning.
All right. So what the public should know is, it's complicated. It's going to require a lot of resources and time and money, and we have a number of programs under our Housing Element, as well as other planning initiatives that council has made a priority to undertake in the next handful of years, and it's going to be a heavy lift. Is that a fair summary?
That's a fair summary.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other council members with questions? I'm sorry, Manny, Manuel.
It's all good, John. It's uncomfortable to say first things sometimes. I just want to piggyback on Jeff's comments. When did that get, like, when did we do that process of having those specific nuances in our general plan versus a separate place?
Well, it was before my time, so I'm not sure I can pinpoint the exact timeline, but many of those policies have been in place since the 1990s.
Okay.
And some before.
And obviously, we have to do it at the same time. Is that a forever thing? Can we decide when we update it to separate those or be more vague in the general plan?
We can. When we do the general plan and zoning update, we can decide if we want to structure our general plan and zoning code a little bit differently.
Okay. I think we should look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea?
So Slide nine, when we talk about the general plan update rezoning and program EIR, we've actually talked a lot about the West Side ownership overlay.
Yeah, I think the intention was to eliminate that urban plan altogether, and that's how we've described it in the Housing Element, but ultimately, I think what's important about the list of urban plans and specific plans that are on Slide nine is that there are many of them that provide different development standards and processes in different areas of the city. So ultimately, I think what we would do here, when we're looking at retooling our general plan and rezoning, is just to simplify and really integrate those urban plan areas, so it's not such a hodgepodge.
Yeah, I'll admit, I don't think I fully realized that in order to tinker with any of them, it would require a full general plan amendment, so thanks, Jeff, for pulling that out. I mean, I think we've sort of been operating, Manny, correct me if I'm wrong, right? We've been operating under this, like, impression that none of us like some of these overlays, and so we don't want to encourage development necessarily that fundamentally does not comport with the values of this council. Nevertheless, we're two years from being able to enact that, which means projects are going to keep coming to us, that we will be in a position where we ultimately have to approve because they meet the letter of the law, the law of the land right now. And I just, is there an intermediate step? Is there a temporary rescind, or a way to pause on some of these? I guess I just, I'm glad we're doing this. I didn't realize it was going to be two and a half years before we could pull back on some of these things.
Yeah, I think so many of our documents are very interconnected, and our zoning code is required to be consistent with our general plan, and that's the case with all cities. So because of the integrated nature of the general plan, zoning code, and the urban plans, it's really a domino effect when you try to tweak something in any one of them, especially related to promoting additional housing opportunities. So we've looked at interim steps. The approach related to creating objective design standards, coupled with our visioning and community engagement, is really an attempt at that interim step. It's to develop those design standards and to incorporate them into the general plan, so that even if the specifics of updating each and every urban plan and specific plan in the future takes more time than even we think it will, we have those development standards that reflect the visioning and engagement discussions that we have, and we've incorporated them into the general plan. So I really think that's our first step, but it's a good question, and we'll continue to look at options for sort of an interim step in the meantime.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
Not right this second.
Yeah, if somebody wants to take another bite at the apple, they always can. Arliss?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So first of all, this is very exciting. I'm really happy, I guess I knew this because it was in our Housing Element, but really happy to see that we're going to do all of this work in two years. And I really, really, really like the milestone schedule that you set up, so thank you for putting that together. I'd like to understand a little bit more, because we've talked about how important engaging the community is throughout this process, especially where we are looking at visions for different areas of the city. So I see that in the staff report and in the presentation, we talk about this visioning step, and then the different corridor plans and urban plans and so on. So can you just talk a little bit in terms that the general public will understand kind of how we see that process working and where the community should be engaging to make sure that their visions are heard?
Well, we intend to start this entire process with community engagement and visioning, and any large planning effort like this would always start that way. So our intention is really to focus sort of citywide on community engagement and then to go more specific in specific areas or neighborhoods of the city, so that we're really picking up the details and the nuances of the different Costa Mesa neighborhoods and the different values and expectations that each of those neighborhoods has as to what they'd like to see in a great neighborhood moving forward. So we will start off that way. That's the first step, really to identifying what makes a great neighborhood and how we move forward with incorporating those things that make a great neighborhood into our design standards and design guidelines. Ultimately, those design standards and design guidelines get incorporated into our zoning code as development standards and into our general plan, as well as policies. So we'll start out with engagement and visioning, and then we'll have repeated check-ins throughout the process. It is a long process, so we know that people, it's tough to stay engaged in a process for a three-year time period, but we will start out with engagement and we'll ensure that we have touchpoints throughout the process so folks can continue to stay engaged.
As a follow-up to that, my understanding from Slide 14 in your presentation is that we'll have one RFP for all of the visioning, and that's according to the schedule, over a two-year period, is that right? So one contract for visioning, even like neighborhood or sort of area-specific visioning, is that right?
Yes. The idea is that usually, visioning and engagement, and really, when it's done well, is done by a very specific type of consultant that would work with city staff to sort of make visuals and ensure that people understand what we're talking about, but ultimately, that that consultant would be integrated with our general plan update process as well. So whether that's two different consultants or whether it's two different teams that integrate well together or the same consultant, I think we'll be asking, as part of our request for proposals, for consultants really to give us their best proposal for how to best integrate those efforts. But that's the way we see it.
Okay. And that engagement, as I understand, is to inform then the different corridor plans and updates to overlays and so on?
Correct.
Okay. And so in the staff report, at the bottom of Page six, it looks like we've laid out a proposed order of the different specific plans and overlays and corridor plans, and I just wanted to understand a little bit of the, kind of the logic for that order in particular, and two kind of questions came, actually, three questions came to mind as part of that. So I'd like to understand kind of the reason for that sequencing. And the questions that came up is, we had considered once incorporating Harbor Boulevard into the FDC planning because of that, you know, obviously, adjacent relationship. I had thought Newport Boulevard was going to happen sooner, just based on previous conversations. And then the third question is just, could you define the 17th Street corridor area envisioned here? But if you could just start with the kind of the general logic in terms of the sequencing.
Yeah, so on Page six, this was intended somewhat to represent a priority, but not completely. So what I'll say is that the intention is to start out with the design standards, because I really think that that's where the visioning and engagement comes into play and really defining what Costa Mesa residents think makes a great neighborhood, and we need that information to move forward. So we're starting with that. Fairview Developmental Center is a priority, one, because we have grant funds that have a timing associated with it, two, because it represents a very large portion of our RENA allocation, and the same really goes for the update to the North Costa Mesa specific plan. The majority of housing opportunity sites identified in the Housing Element are within the Fairview Developmental Center specific plan and also in the North Costa Mesa area north of the I-405. So that's the reason that those are prioritized first. Beyond that, the update to the city's urban plans and the corridor plans, that was intended to be sort of at the same time. We may have a phasing in priority within those areas, but the next corridor that has the highest concentration of housing opportunity sites is Harbor Boulevard. Newport Boulevard is identified in our Housing Element as something to study for the future, but we don't actually identify any housing opportunity sites on Newport, primarily because of lot sizes. A lot of the lot sizes along Newport Boulevard are half-acre and just aren't as conducive to housing opportunities and housing development, at least in the eight-year planning period for purposes of demonstrating to HCD that we have feasible housing opportunity sites. So that's the reason that they sorted out the way that they did.
And then 17th Street, was this intended to be west 17th, like west of Newport Boulevard?
This corridor area, let me see if I can pull up a map here really quickly. I think that will best demonstrate. These are the corridor areas that were identified previously, and our housing opportunity sites are shown in yellow in the corridor areas. So it's West 17th Street.
Okay, okay. So it overlaps with some of our urban plans, but just wanted to confirm.
It does. It overlaps with our urban plans.
Okay. So another big-picture question, we've talked a lot about the, you know, obvious relationship between housing and transportation and mobility. We have another council goal on access to open space, right? All of these things are very much related. So can you describe how, while all of this work as part of the Housing Element is very much focused on, like, creating capacity to build different types of housing, how do we make sure that we incorporate our open space needs, for example, especially in areas where we're looking to add a lot of new housing that already is park-deficient?
So I think one thing that's very important to note here is that when we're talking about creating opportunities for new housing, it's not just the new housing units, it's really, it's really we're talking about how to create new neighborhoods, new communities. And part of that is looking at transportation options. Part of that is looking at open space and open space resource planning, park resource planning. And we have a number of elements or chapters in the general plan that specifically address our open space and park policies. So it's not just the Housing Element that will be updated as part of this effort, it's the land use element, it's the housing element, it's our open space element, and all of those considerations that we define in defining great neighborhoods will need to be incorporated into our general plan as policies that we'll implement moving forward.
Okay, great. I had seen the circulation element called out specifically, so helpful to know that the other elements would be included in that update as well.
Yes, we have several elements. I anticipate that this effort will touch many of them.
Okay, okay. I think this is, last question for now at least, how much of this isn't funded yet? You know, we've put a lot of money aside, we've gotten some grants, and just generally, right? Is most of it funded? Is 10% not funded? How much more money do we need to put into this in the next couple of years to get this work done?
It's a really good question. What I would say is that we did a lot of initial research on sort of, you know, what is a general plan amendment costing these days, and we really looked at it from a comprehensive general plan amendment perspective, because that may very well be what this turns into. It's very typical to have a comprehensive general plan update cost anywhere from $3 to $5 million. We have $2.4 million set aside now, which is a great start. We'll be working with the city manager's office and our finance director on how to continue to put money aside to fund this effort.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Those are my questions.
Lauren, do you have any questions?
No.
Right. So I just have a couple of things I want to talk about. Some more questions, some more suggestions. So I was looking up some stuff the other day on Wikipedia, and I thought it would be fun to look at the Costa Mesa Wikipedia page. And I landed on the section demographics. And so I, I came up with, I, I just looked at the difference in the population over the last number of years. So we've been a city for 70 years. And I'm going to go through this, this real quick, and then I have a, I have an idea that I want to see if, if you or any of the council members think will be, would be helpful. So the first sentence, census we participated in was 1960, and it was 37,550 population. And then the biggest jump in a census since then is 1970. We went up to 72,660 in population, and that's a 93.5% jump. Now during that period of time, 60 to 70, that's when a lot of housing was built in the city of Costa Mesa, including my home. So it was during that period of time. I think it was actually before that time in the 50s that really the first tract, which is the Freedom Homes where Arlis lives, was, was built. And then there was some building in the 50s of housing, but then in the 60s, there was a bit of a boom, both in population and in our development of our neighborhoods. Mesa del Mar was in the 60s, probably call it part of College Park at least. Mesa North, these places like that. So there was a, a big housing boom and population boom in the 60s. I'm getting to something, okay? From 60, from 70 to 80, it went from 72,000 roughly to 82,000, a 13.6% bump. And you'll see some housing built during that period of time. From, from 80 to 90, the population went from 82 roughly to 96,357. That's a 16.7% bump. And then in the year 2000, it, population went onto 108,724. This is all based on the census. That's a 12.8% bump. And then, then, since 2000, so that was 23 years ago, population and housing growth in the city of Costa Mesa has remained pretty much flat. So remember, we were at 108,000 in 2000, based on the 20, 2010 census. We only went up to 109,960. That's a 1.1% increase. And in the most recent census, 2020, we went up to roughly 112,000, and that's a 1.8% bump. So in the, in, in the last 20, well, obviously you can't, there really was not, I don't think any substantial population growth in the last three years, and we haven't at least seen housing growth at all. We went up to basically less, a little less than 3% in the last 23 years. It, it's also kind of interesting to note that we had, you know, some of the political winds of change, you know? In 2010 was kind of a important year politically in the city of Costa Mesa as it relates to development, because we brought in a new group of council members who developed a lot of units in the city. And then there was a reaction to that. And in 2016, you know, a very important year in the politics of the city of Costa Mesa, I got elected. And, and, and measure Y occurred. And then from, from 16 to 20, and 16 to 23, really, we've seen a complete stop of any housing growth in the city of Costa Mesa. And that's not really unusual, because ever since 2008, just in general, with the, you know, 2007, 2008 in the state of California, there's been very flat growth, and that gets us to the position we're in now. So I, I, here's, so that's to my suggestion. So that's just population and a few kind of anecdotal political digressions and housing digressions. But I think it would be good to have what I'll, what I'll call, and I don't, you know, look, you've got enough on your plate, right? So this is a fun little project that somebody can do over the next few months, is to create what I'll call the Costa Mesa cheat sheet. And the Costa Mesa cheat sheet would have this, this data, but would also have the housing data. And the housing data over the, over that period of time would be broken up into single-family housing and multifamily housing. And then also, running alongside that is the cost of housing. You know, so I bought my first house in 19, roughly 1990, when we had 96,000 people in the city of Costa Mesa. That was, and, and I bought my house for $261,000 in Mesa del Mar, districts, currently District III. So I think it would be important to do that for a couple of reasons, because it, and also have the cost of housing in terms of a single-family home, and whatever other metric you think is pertinent. Like, for example, the cost of a two-bedroom apartment, how it's grown over time. And, and then also vacancy rate, you know, which is also important. I mean, and, and then we could all kind of look at this as a council and a planning commission, staff and a community, and, and say, this is how our, our city has evolved, and this is why we need to do the things that we're doing. And, and also to say between, and this is demonstrated over and over again in your report, and in, and in the, in the, in, in the actual, the, the written report and your PowerPoint, how, I'll say gradually, things change. I, I, I almost used the term glacially, but I, I didn't want to be pejorative, and I don't mean that to you. But how gradually things change over time. And how really, if you look at, they've, they've actually frozen in time, you know? And, and a community that, and, because, you know, we do get, the comment was a legitimate comment that we had from the public earlier that we get a lot, which is, don't bring any more people into the city. There's going to be traffic, there's going to be crime, there's going to be people, it's going to be expensive. How are we going to get rid of the poop? How are we going to get watered people? You know, this is a real problem. And, and to understand really, A, we need it. The numbers dictate that we need it. The metrics, we've heard that term here before. The metrics show that we, that we need it. And it will be done in a way that's gradual and thoughtful and reasonable. But if we have that cheat sheet that we can all kind of just internalize and people to go to and give to the public and have it on our website, then people really understand what we're doing here. And that, that nobody has any, that you don't have to fear the six of us or the seven of us. We're not going to build a bunch of skyscrapers or anything like that. We're just responding to a need that has been ignored, for whatever reason, has not been addressed for, some could say, 25 years. And somebody needs to stand up and address this issue, because we do need housing for the next generation of Costa Mases, Costa Masons, and even the current generation. So, there's no question in there. It's just all statements and suggestions, but it is a study session. And I do have a question, but not for you. Nate, in the second page of our staff report, there's a discussion of the CalOptima street medicine and the money that we recently got awarded to us. Can you just give us a couple of minutes on that new development, and how that's going to improve our offering to address homelessness in the city? I'll get you. There you go.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, so we had CalOptima, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor. The CalOptima Health Board approved the city of Costa Mesa as one of two additional cities to implement street medicine in 2024. July of 2024 is when that'll go into effect. Us in Anaheim, we're the only two additional cities to include Garden Grove, who's the current city running street medicine. So three out of 34 cities. Again, huge accomplishment for the city of Costa Mesa to be selected for that. Ultimately, in a nutshell, CalOptima realized that they had an issue. 90, probably more than 90% of people experiencing homelessness are Medi-Cal eligible, yet only 20 or 30% are actually accessing the services that are available to them. So in order to combat that, CalOptima started street medicine, essentially bringing Medi-Cal to people experiencing homelessness. Expecting a homeless person to take an Uber to their Medi-Cal doctor 10 miles away in another city is just never going to happen. And so again, to combat that, they created street medicine, which brings doctors, psychiatrists, you know, people that can actually administer medicine and administer treatment in a van to people experiencing homelessness on the streets of Costa Mesa, Garden Grove and Anaheim. So again, a, a huge accomplishment, not only for CalOptima, but for the city. And I think the beauty of street medicine in general is the synergy that it's going to have with some of the other advancements in our city as well. The council approved an application to the state, a joint application with the county for the $4.2 million grant to add additional beds at the shelter. So you, you look at the behavioral health improvements at the shelter, so we'll be able to serve people better when they get into shelter. And then the way that that synergizes with the work that street medicine will do to engage folks out on the street, get them the medications that they need so that they are in the right place to receive shelter, which gets them on the path to permanent housing. So just the way that that all works together. And then you look at Motel 6, which was up on the screen earlier. There's 10 Mental Health Services Act beds in that project. And so how the city's addressing outreach and engagement, shelter and housing with regards to behavioral health, which includes mental health and substance use. We, we truly are a trailblazer. There's no city that does it better than Costa Mesa as far as a comprehensive system of care for our residents. Again, nobody does it better. So very, very exciting, not only currently, but in, in the months to come, so.
Thank you, Nate. Thank you, Nate. Good answer. Okay. Are we ready for phase two? Let's do it.
Okay, so I'd like to turn over the presentation to Karen Gully from Placework. She has a few team members here from, from her team. So I'll let her introduce herself and her team.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It is a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm Karen Gully with Placework's Managing Principal of Design, and I am joined by Steve Gunnels, our Chief Economist, and Suzanne Schwab, sitting next to Paivon, who's also our project manager for this project. So tonight, we're coming to you to share an update on the process and give you an idea of our next steps. Is this supposed to be working? Is there a special way? Oh, it's not on? Do you want to just do it for me? Okay, Jennifer, you good to do it for me? All right, all right, next slide, please. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an overview of the specific plan process, talk a little bit more about outreach, housing goals, discuss the site potential, do a deeper dive into housing types that we're going to be evaluating and that we could potentially expect on-site to eventually be built. Talk a little bit more about affordable housing. And then Steve's going to go into the future developer considerations and what we're doing to assess that. Even though it says Q and A here at the end, I, you know, we're, you're welcome to ask, ask questions along the way. Next slide. So this project is a two-year process with opportunities for community input throughout. The specific plan itself will result, will result in a new land use plan that includes zoning standards, design requirements, and plans for infrastructure. Also will include a financing and phasing plan. It is anticipated to be implemented by future developers with the state undertaking a process to identify and enter into a contract with the future developer during this process. And of course, it will include an environmental impact report. Our role as your consultant team is to ensure that this plan is financially feasible, it is desirable to build, and that it best addresses the vision or visions of the community. Next slide. This is a quick summary of the actions to date by the city and state that affect this planning process. The first, in 2016, the state adopted the FDC closure plan. In 2022, SB 188 was approved that documents the disposition of the property. Also in 2022, there was an agreement between the city and the state for a city-led planning effort, comprehensive planning effort. In 2023, the state pursued and is currently pursuing a 15-acre emergency operations center. In 2023, back in September, we kicked off the preparation of the specific plan and EIR. In 2025, will be the completion of both the specific plan and EIR in September. Next slide. Our process for community engagement is really focused around key timeframes within our work effort. Our first community workshop was held in early November, focusing on visioning and guiding principles. Jennifer mentioned how you start off a project that way, and we did the same. I'll go into a little bit of detail about what we heard and the effort that we undertook to outreach to the community. Our second community workshop is bringing a draft vision statement and guiding principles based on their input for them to then review and provide comment on. We're also going to be reviewing the market studies that Steve is doing currently. And then also begin to get input from them on the kinds of elements that they'd like to see addressed in the alternatives. Our third community workshop will be where we will put three alternative concepts, land plans, circulation, open space concepts, together for them to look at and provide comment on. In addition to providing those land use alternatives, we will have done an assessment of traffic, of infrastructure, of open space needs, of development costs and other aspects, so that everyone has a really clear understanding about how they compare with each other, some of the pros and cons. Through that workshop, we will be taking input on those alternatives from the community. And following that workshop, we will be preparing a preferred plan that we will then come and take back to you in a separate city council hearing. Our fourth community workshop will be around a draft specific plan and all the different components, looking for additional community input before we finalize that document and prepare it for public hearing.
Before you, before you go on, Karen, since you invited us to interrupt you.
Yep.
At what point, what, what's the best way for the city council, individually or in small groups or Brown Act compliant, to provide our input to you?
Well, I would welcome you to join us at our workshops. That's certainly an option. And Jennifer?
Yeah, sure. Happy to weigh in. So we can, we can structure council feedback in a number of ways. Usually how we plan to structure it is either through individual or small group briefings. We've also have worked in council study sessions into this outreach schedule. And ultimately, if, if any council member would like to meet individually, we're happy to do that as well.
Thank you.
All right. So then in addition to the community workshops, we've got what we're considering ongoing methods of outreach. At the very beginning of this process, we initiated stakeholder interviews, and we are still in the process of conducting those stakeholder interviews. The first batch was really focused on meeting with potential developers and builders to understand what their, their thoughts are about this unique opportunity, what some of their considerations would be for potentially bidding on this property. We also gathered information on some of their most current product, housing product types, and what they're seeing happening in the market. We want to make sure that this isn't, isn't just a plan for today, but we are looking forward into the future. They will remain in contact with us as needed throughout this process. We are now initiating additional interviews in the surrounding area in, with the different neighborhoods, as well as reaching out to schools and other, and other potential stakeholders. In addition, we have what we call pop-up events that we will be conducting at places where we already know the community is gathering. These are really quick and easy opportunities to get feedback on things. These are really quick and easy opportunities to get feedback on things, and those will be happening throughout the process. We've got a project website. I'll show you in a moment the URL for that. It's a dedicated project website that will contain all of our information that we've compiled and presented throughout the project. We will also, through that website, be conducting some online surveys. So you can think of the project website as an extension of our in-person outreach, and it will be an opportunity for two-way conversation. Next slide. Our November workshops really started the dialogue with the community. We wanted to share information about the project, as well as gather the input for vision and guiding principles, begin to listen to their ideas and their concerns. And we've heard some of those already tonight. Next slide. This is a quick summary of our workshop number one. There were, for every workshop, we're conducting three public meetings. The very first one took place on November 2nd. It was in English, conducted at the senior center here on 19th Street. We had a total of 65 attendees. We gathered input in a group format, as well as took input on comment cards. And our second workshop was on Friday, November 3rd. It was a Spanish-speaking workshop. We had 10 attendees, and we had nine comment cards submitted. On Monday, November 6th, we conducted a virtual workshop. And through Zoom, we're able to conduct small breakout rooms and essentially conduct the same exact workshop, but virtually. We had 39 attendees, had a lot of comments, and questions submitted in the chat. Overall, I'm just going to give you a quick summary of some of these comments. The range of comments included an overall support for affordable housing at this site. And then in terms of density and intensity, there was probably a lot of support for the kind of density that is needed to develop affordable housing. There are concerns about higher density, but there was equally a desire to perhaps find ways to include more affordable housing than is currently the goal of the city. There are, there's an expressed need and desire for ample open space in parks that is needed to support that community. And then, of course, concerns about potential traffic impacts and how we can address those impacts. There's also a desire for certain onsite services, ranging from perhaps neighborhood commercial services to other kinds of services, childcare, a job center, clinic, et cetera. Overall, there's support for ample bike and pedestrian connections, not only within the site, but to adjacent areas, to schools. People understand that there's a lot of trees on that site. They're interested in preserving some trees, if possible. And then in general, there was sentiment that the future emergency operations center would be incompatible with housing. Your staff report goes into detail about the kinds of efforts that the city undertook to advertise for this workshop, as well as a list of additional techniques that we are going to be using in workshops two through four. Next slide, please. The feedback included both comment cards and these group exercises. We had, as our prompt for the community, to give us their thoughts about what are the key ingredients for making a great neighborhood? What's really remarkable about this future project is that anyone in the city currently could become a future resident of this area. So that's why we wanted to ask them what they saw as the most important ingredients for creating a great neighborhood. The answers on the comment cards, we categorized them in terms of housing, open space, recreation, civic uses, community services, commercial retail, sustainability comments, mobility, parking, and transit, and give you an idea quickly of sort of where people's sentiments and the amount of comments were leaning with housing kind of reining strong here. In the group exercise, we had people work around a table and document their ideas. We put all the ideas on the wall and then asked people at the end of the evening to take dots and identify, out of all the ideas on the wall, the things that really resonated with them. And so you can see how that turned out. Without being able to spend all night with you going through all those comments, I want to share with you, next slide, please, that we have all of these posters and comment cards available online on the website, along with a presentation, the presentation that we gave to the community, as well as a recorded presentation that was done at the virtual meeting. All of this information will continue to be added to as we go through the process. Next slide. Moving on to housing, unless anyone has any questions about outreach?
Yeah, I'll just make this point. When we met separately, I shared it also. But I think the, the big picture, and thank you, John, for that intro about sort of the history of development in Costa Mesa. The big picture is that what we're planning to do at Fairview Developmental Center is not, and it's not an extension of College Park. It's not a part of the community that's just going to be reserved for one kind of housing or one kind of resident. What we're, what we'd like to build at Fairview is truly a new neighborhood and one that will have a variety of different housing types to serve a variety of different needs. But that also means that the folks who may want to live there, the folks who may have kids who want to live there are not all going to come from College Park and Mesa del Mar. So I just want to be really careful when we talk about who we're inviting to these meetings and the outreach that we're doing, that we're truly inviting the entire city, that we're not just impacting, yes, I'm very sensitive of the fact that College Park feels and will feel impacted based on Harbor Boulevard, but this is also housing for more than like one part, one district up here. So I would just, I would ask that our outreach went out to the entire city to the extent we can, that we didn't think of this as a normal planning project where we need to inform folks within 1,000 feet of the development, that that's just not the case for something like this. So I thought I heard you say something about surrounding neighborhoods, and so I just felt compelled to make that comment. Is that anything that we're already keeping in mind in terms of the extent of that outreach much broader? And how, how can we reach the entire city?
Yes, so in the staff report, there's a whole list of things that we're going to be doing. And we are working in close cooperation with your community relations manager to do that. And we understand that this effort of reaching a broader base is also going to set the stage for your other future planning efforts that you've been going through tonight. So we can certainly provide more details as we get closer to the next workshop, but rest assured, we, our intent is to reach the entire community.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, moving on to housing. Both the city and state agree that housing shall be a priority use here. In your housing element, as a recap, you have a goal within the Fairview Developmental Center for very low-income units of a total of 575, for low-income units, a total of 345, moderate-income units, 690, and then above moderate, which can be considered market-rate units, 690 units. This is a total of 2,300 units minimum that we need to plan for as part of this project. And if you take the very low and low together, that equates to 40% of the project will be in affordable housing for the very low and low. Next slide. So let's talk about the site. This map shows, these are the Assessor Parcels that we are currently looking at. But the state does also own these other development areas just around it, the Harbor Village Apartments and some of the single-family homes on Park Lane and adjacent to Park Lane. So the overall remaining state land is a total of 158 acres. If you remove the Harbor Village Apartments, which are not going anywhere, are remaining as is, as well as the single-family homes under the state control, that leaves a specific plan boundary of 121 acres. If you take away the 15 acres for the emergency operations center, if you take away the, basically the right-of-way, the streets for Fair Drive and Merrimack, and you also take away the properties on Mark Lane, that equals 99 acres of new development potential. And then when you divide that by the 2,300 units, we're looking at an average of 23 dwelling units per acre, and that does not include roads or public parks. And that's sort of, kind of providing the foundation for this next kind of overview that I'd like to give. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we do when we're starting to plan for a large site like this is to begin to understand capacity in the context. So we took a look at Playa Vista, California, which has some similarities to Costa Mesa in terms of its proximity to the ocean, in terms of the mix of uses within the community. Playa Vista here in this location is a variety of housing product types, all relatively new in the, in the market. It looks to maximize density. There's not a lot of public parks, but there is a lot of private green space and amenities. So in this example, we asked the question, if this were Playa Vista, how many homes would fit within our study area? And the total is about 4,500 homes would fit here. So in this case, we now know that we don't have to be as dense or as intense as Playa Vista, but it does give us that, that quick overview. Next slide, please. So we took a look at another relatively new, built-out area with multifamily housing, relatively dense. We picked a site in the Irvine Spectrum. Again, how many homes would fit here? The Irvine Spectrum has a lot of private green space and pools. And within the project area for Fairview, you could fit approximately 5,000 units at 50 to the acre. So again, we know we don't have to be as dense as either of those. Next slide. So we want to move into the kinds of residential building types that we think we'll probably want to locate here and that we'd like to prepare for. Next slide. The first is the small-lot, single-family housing. You have some great examples of this already in your community. It can be attached and detached. It does often represent first-time homebuyers or move-up homebuyers with families. You can achieve anywhere from 10 to 17 dwelling units per acre, two to three stories in height, typically have two-car garages. They can either be built as a condominium or fee simple, meaning they own the land and the property. And then oftentimes, there's some private open space. Next slide, please. Moving up on the ladder, we have the townhomes. Townhomes tend to be available for moderate income, first-time homebuyers, very popular product type being built in Orange County. It is attached, ranges anywhere from 10 to 24 units per acre, lots of great examples of this, two to three stories, depending on the configuration, one or two-car garages. They can oftentimes be tucked under their condominiums, and they can also include live-work Next, we have the courtyard style. And so these courtyards typically have the parking within the courtyard. There's also a different kind called a green court, where the parking's on the exterior, and you've got the green space on the inside. These range anywhere from 12 to 26 units per acre, two to three stories. Parking is typically tucked under the unit, either condominiums, meaning for sale, or they can be for rental in a multifamily product. And there is typically common open space amenities within this product type. Next slide, please. So then, within the Playa Vista project, there are a number of very high-end market-rate, what I'm going to call multi-story flats. And these achieve anywhere from 30 to above per acre. They range in height from four to seven stories, depending on how the parking is configured. Oftentimes, when you've got a four-story, you can actually accommodate parking in a tuck-under consideration. When you go above four stories, you're going to need underground parking. These are condominiums. They're designed as single-level flats. They're typically high-end, market-rate housing with common open space amenities. These photos are from new products in Playa Vista. Then we move on to the next density category, the multifamily housing product. They range, they can range anywhere from 30 to over 100 units per acre. And the density is often dictated by how the parking is configured, as well as the unit sizes. Buildings can include ground-floor retail and other uses. The range of parking options that you see associated with multifamily include surface parking. Then you can have above-grade structures or below-ground structures, or a combination of both. And then along with that can come a whole variety of common open space amenities. Next slide, please. And then finally, it's important to cover affordable housing today and reaching out to our local affordable housing developers. We've gotten some very recent projects from them, and they will continue to be a resource for us. In fact, some of that projects I just showed you in some of the previous slides is affordable housing as well. My point is that you cannot tell the difference between market-rate housing and affordable housing these days. They are designed with the utmost attention to detail in terms of design and use of materials. These are three examples done by National Core, one in Lake Forest, one in Buena Park, and one in Santa Ana. And then Steve is going to go into more details about affordable housing. Next slide. So before we move on, are there any questions about housing types or anything else? Yes?
Sorry. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Great presentation. I love the kind of overlays on different communities to show that, that build-out capacity. My question, I want to make sure I'm clear on sort of the maybe minimum project parameters, I guess. So, so you've shared, we have a goal of 2,300 units, a goal, maybe requirement that 40% of those are in the low and very low-income categories. And then certainly, I forgot the term you used, but it, like, the plan has to be buildable, right? Are there any other, I had thought that we had some minimum open space requirements. And again, maybe that's sort of tied to our general plan requirements. But what other minimum requirements do we need to meet as part of this planning process?
Well, that's the beauty of a specific plan, is that you can tailor those for the project. And so we'll certainly use your current zoning as a guide. But through the specific plan process, we will be setting height limits, densities, setback requirements, open space requirements. And when we talk about open space, it's not just any kind of open space. We'll look at requirements for private open space and how that's configured, and whether it's indoor and outdoor, and how that counts. And we'll also look for common open space that can be associated with the project. And then we'll look for requirements for public open space as well.
Okay, so those will be defined throughout the process?
Yes.
And maybe we heard, or at least in your summary of workshop one comments, those seem to come out as, as priority needs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the other big component to the requirements will be focused on elements of design that we know are going to be important to the community and making sure that we set standards for those as well.
Yeah, okay, okay. On the 2,300 number, so you showed some, just some sort of simple example overlays that showed like, hey, there are communities in Southern California that, based on that design, that in Irvine, right, that based on that design, we could build 5,000 units reasonably.
Exactly.
Could we, are we, is our focus 2,300 and are, are, are our alternatives different ways to get to 2,300? Or is there a plan for one of the alternatives to sort of look at a max build-out scenario? I'd be interested in seeing how high we could go.
Well, that's good input. The timing's perfect because we're going to be starting our alternatives tomorrow.
And I shouldn't say like, how. And I shouldn't say like, how high could we go? I'm not looking for, you know, 40-story skyscrapers, but, you know, in a reasonably dense community that could meet more of our housing need, I'd be interested in not tying ourselves to that sort of minimum number. Okay. And then the last, I didn't hear explicitly stated is, but we heard, you know, the concerns and they always come up about, okay, how many cars is this going to bring into our community? How does this impact traffic? And one of the things we've discussed here is really how to kind of contain some of that traffic, right? So as I was, as I'm, I think almost every day thinking about these issues, I was thinking about that first year of COVID when like, I probably got in my car twice because I could walk so many places, right? So will this process include looking at ways to sort of place amenities so that maybe people don't have to leave the community? And let me add, just because I was on a webinar today where I was reminded of some numbers that really surprised me, in particular about sort of our aging community. And what was it? The average American now lives seven to 10 years beyond their driving capacity. So more and more and more older adults like will live beyond when they're actually allowed to drive. So we need ways for older adults to be able to get around without being able to drive. And we certainly know that there's many young people in our community who can't drive, right? And so that, I think that percentage of people who don't have cars or can't have cars is higher than I even thought. And so I think considering that as we plan is going to be really important. Well, I'll just leave it at that. So, yeah, so how does this plan incorporate sort of design strategies to reduce the impact of increased traffic in other areas?
Well, the mobility planning component will be happening simultaneous with the alternatives. And one of the things we've already learned in our existing conditions assessment is that essentially the site's sort of been the hole in the donut in terms of planning for off-road improvements, trails, bike facilities that could be on or off-road. So this is really an opportunity to think about how to connect to the community now and provide those non-vehicular connections that you, you know, identified as being desirable, and we agree with that. We can't change the fact that Harbor Boulevard has a lot of great commercial uses that are certainly going to be used by the future residents there. The key is how do they get there and how can we make it easier for them to get there? And then internally as well, what can be supported on-site? And where should that be located? And Steve will talk a little bit more about that. But yes, that's a huge aspect of what we're going to be looking at, trying to find ways to keep as much traffic, you know, within the site as possible.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Just real quick, I actually thought SB 188 had a minimum open space requirement. Am I misremembering that?
I don't think it had a minimum open space requirement. I just think that it stated that open space was a priority.
Okay. Can we, let's double-check that because I
I will double-check.
Very firmly have in my head that there is a minimum amount of space that needs to be preserved. Excuse me.
I will double-check.
I'll also just say really quickly, on the biking and walking, I don't want to position those things as like, housing is first, and then we sort of figure out how to add some biking and walking trails afterwards. I think when we're thinking about creating a new community, thinking about creating a new neighborhood, it's also about what is integrated from the get-go? And how are we positioning the entirety of the neighborhood to embrace the kind of living that is more popular and desirable? And so I'll say that about biking and walking, but also about sustainability, frankly, and living in spaces that incorporate more open space, more green space, more green, period. I think it's about how we are positioning that entire piece of land to maybe like think a different way about having what we want in a neighborhood. And so I know that you know this already. I'm not telling you something you don't know at all. I just want to kind of switch our way of thinking, you know, housing first, yes, that's a requirement, we have to check the box. But I really want to see an integrated neighborhood that I would want to live in above all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Yes, thank you. So I have a few questions in regards to kind of what you presented. Let's start off with some of the things that you've done in regards to stakeholder interviews and developer meetings. When we're talking about that, have you looked into how much of these developments are going to be a renter-only versus homeownership opportunities? I know you talked about condominiums and townhomes and rentals and medium and high densities, but when we're looking at this, how much, is there going to be any requirements for ownership minimums? That's the first question.
We have not talked about that with staff. Typically, that's not something that is mandated in a specific plan. So is there input you want to provide along those lines?
Well, there's a comment that I'll make, and I'm going to go back to an old comment, and I don't think it's anybody's goal to become a renter. Everyone's goal is to become an owner, ownership pride. So, I mean, if I looked out here and said, raise your hand if you want to be a renter, no one's going to raise their hand and say they want to be a renter all their lives. I like the smile out there when I see because maybe you are a renter, but you would like to be a homeowner, right? So I just, I'm curious to see if we have any studies or what we're looking towards with that. As far as when you do interviews with stakeholders and developers, what are their intentions? The second thing would be infrastructure impacts. Are we considering when we do medium and high-density developments, what's the impact on our police, fire, school, public works? I know we talked about roads a little bit, but how does that impact some of our, you know, we are a full-service city, so we provide everything to this community. How is that going to impact our police department when we add 2,300 units and there's three people per unit? That's 10,000 people. What are the numbers that we can use to calculate, that we can present back to our police department and say, hey, you're going to need this? Or he or she will tell us this is what we need.
Yes, we will be looking at all those aspects of infrastructure and services.
Okay.
Yeah. And then in terms of the, what it's going to take to have more for-sale housing than rental housing, Steve is going to address that in just a sec.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Manuel.
Thank you, John. And thank you, my, thank you to the council for being able to give points and suggestions. I kind of wanted to honestly piggyback off of the mayor's opening statements on the last, the last portion of the study session about the need for housing. So as folks know, I represent Westside Costa Mesa District for, born and raised, lived my whole life. And there are a couple of things that I just think I need to share that are normal in that part of town. For those that don't know, I work at Nonprofit Clos Saver Youth. I work with middle school, high school kids every day, and these are the realities they tell me. The first, it's very common for students in this program, students that live in Costa Mesa, that go to Costa Mesa schools, to live in one bedroom, the whole family, because there's another family in a different bedroom in a two-bedroom apartment. That's the normal in my district. That's actually considered like being homeless by California standard, we can even tell. Second, sad reality, there are more high school students working to help their parents pay their bills. I'm 28 years old. 10 years ago, I was in high school. There are more kids now in our community working to help their parents pay their bills in half of an apartment, so like I say, in Costa Mesa. And third, despite the ordinance we passed a month ago for renter protections, I still have residents emailing me and calling me, telling me, I'm still being asked to leave my apartment despite the protections you just passed. This is my community. There's kids growing up in our city that think that's normal. That is not normal. And I think the mayor did a great job highlighting it through the census. There is a pent-up demand for housing. There's a pent-up demand for housing. I think Fairview is honestly the last great chance we have in Costa Mesa to build housing. And I wanted to say something as a young person who's had the privilege of working and volunteering throughout the county about three types of, just three, three types of housing that I've seen that I think we incorporate in Fairview. The first is actually here in Costa Mesa. Clubhouse Road in Mesa Verde is an excellent job of density done right. You can't even tell it's a dense for-sale condominiums because it's done so well. We should look at that for FDC. Second, Irvine Spectrum, we mentioned, we showed the slide. I have a friend who works at Chapman, is a professor, who lives there. That is the most walkable community I've been into my entire life that's not, that's not out of this country. It's not, it's dense, but it doesn't feel dense. And third, Villa Sienna in Irvine off of Jamboree Housing. Gated community, a lot of housing, a lot of folks walking, not a lot of impacted traffic because they're all in that community. I want to, I want to challenge ourselves to look at density, but density done right on that site. One thing I'll point out, and I see this now as a council member visiting other parts of town, there are more people walking and biking in Westside and Eastside than there are in Mesa Verde and Mesa del Mar. The density we create, we have in these areas, the density that predates the city's creation actually is more walkable communities. That's what I think we should be building in Fairview Development Center, FDC. We want communities where people actually talk to their neighbors, they feel comfortable walking, and they don't feel the need to drive their cars. I don't even drive my car anymore because I work a block from my house. We need more people that can bike to their jobs, that can bike to transit stations, and that would do this traffic. Finally, for the actual, you know, makeup of that site, I think there's four things, and I rank them first, staff's convenience, that I think we should look at. You know, Lauren always mentions the opportunity for entry homeownership, and I agree. I would love to be a homeowner. It's just kind of hard when you pay, you know, over two-thirds of your income in rent. I think we need more townhomes where it's easier to get entry level. It's easier to get the American dream, right? I think we should look at for-sale flats. Might be more affordable than buying a home. And quite frankly, I never owned a home my entire life. I never lived in a home my entire life. I don't even know the need for a backyard. Never had one my whole, never had one. There's a lot of people in Costa Mesa that rent, over 60%. Let's not limit ourselves for their future because we're investing in open space and we're investing in bike paths that go to open space like Fairview and other areas. Let's look at courtyard housing. Again, we have a model here in Costa Mesa with the clubhouse circle. No one complains about it whatsoever. It's beautiful and it's right in Mesa Verde. And finally, if we do have to do traditional type of homes, let's do small ones. Let's not do big ones. We know that the worst thing for the environment has been sprawl. It creates more congestion with cars. It creates more emissions. If we're being serious about, which is in climate action, climate, we have to have density. Density creates walkability, that creates better communities, and quite frankly, that helps reduce the need for traffic. So I want us to drink big with Fairview. And to Andrea's point, this is the last spot to develop in Costa Mesa. And it's not just for one community, it's for the entire city. So thank you for your presentation so far. I think that had to be said for the public, and I think that's what I plan to advocate for in that site. So thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Yes, Jeff.
I don't know if I want to follow Manny after that one.
Now, what do you have to say?
I know. Usually I do like wrapping things up, but Manny, I think, covered it. I have more comments than questions, although I might work one in here, Karen and Steve, although I'm eager to hear Steve's presentation. You know, I think, based on what I've heard from my colleagues, and in particular, well, everybody, we just need a new paradigm for this, this land that we actually have an opportunity on. And I think you've heard from everybody kind of the specific topics, you know, open space, density. I really want us to get away from talking about the word density. Nobody knows what it means. It's a proportion, it's a metric. Nobody in this, in this building can tell me what the density of their neighborhood is, right? I mean, it's, it's relatively meaningless. I think what people are referring to, though, is the environments, the design, the massing, the scale, the pattern of development, all of that factors into it. Nobody knows density. In fact, I think I'd prefer us to think in terms of, you know, how do we use this land more efficiently, and how do we make it more communal? Those, to me, seem to be principles that we should be considering. And, you know, I appreciated the mayor's discussion about development, population, I'm sorry, John's discussion about that. I've been thinking a bit more about Bethel Tower on 19th Street as, not so much of a paradigm, but it's an interesting example because it's, does anybody know how many units there are in Bethel Tower on 19th? Want to take a guess? Sorry? 268. 268 units. Anybody want to guess on how tall it is, story-wise? It's 18 stories. So, and to me, it's somewhat of a graceful building, and it's not in, you know, somewhat of an anomaly, but it's affordable senior housing across the street from our senior center on 19th Street, very walkable neighborhood. It's on a less-than-three-acre site. So that density, if you want to talk about density, is very high. I don't hear anybody complaining about it. I'm not suggesting that we need to litter Fairview Development Center with Bethel Towers, but there may be a place for that. And if we want to have more open space, we need to use our land more efficiently. So just, just a thought, I mean, we've got a local example, let's, let's consider, maybe these people have different opinions. I don't have much more to add at this point, other than to say it's, I really think we need to, we need to think differently. And I would encourage our consultant team not to necessarily rely on our zoning code and our prior development standards. Parking minimums may not necessarily be the right thing here. In fact, I venture to say, forget about it. Let's see if we could do it without parking minimums. I know some people in the back like hearing that. But it just has to be different. And it's not necessarily for who lives here in the community now. I think that point was raised, although it may be, it may help solve our overcrowding issue, as Manny pointed out. It may provide new opportunities for, for first-time homebuyers or long-term renters. I don't think that's necessarily a, a bad thing in and of itself. But it should be a complete community. It should be able to take advantage of being at Harbor and what that commercial corridor offers, but also to be able for people to stay there and enjoy a life in their own neighborhood. You know, most of the development in Costa Mesa on the larger scale are just tracts. They're not actually designed communities. And I think this really is one of those opportunities for us.
Yeah. I agree. I want to add a field to the cheat sheet is the average median income over time. And my hypothesis is the median income compared to the median cost of housing, the cost of housing is outpacing our increase in median income. I'm pretty fairly sure that that hypothesis will be established. The other thing is, and it will also, you know, demonstrate why we're doing what we're doing and what the need is. I just want to, we're talking about different places to compare, and I thought that that was brilliant, what you did. I really appreciate it. I thought that was really nice. I've never thought to do that. And Andrea made a really good point about, about community, to look at our, the community we want to have here, not just in terms of the number of houses, but the, what we want to see. And it kind of took me back to my, to the 80s, you know, when I had hair and it was, you know, nicer than this. And I was living in a, in a city called Davis, California. And Davis, California, we took for granted, I took for granted, I never drove a car for three years. I didn't drive, I didn't own a car, I never drove a car. Always took my bike everywhere. And I didn't think about it till then. I came back after serving on the council to one of my reunions, and I realized that Davis, California was designed so everybody could ride a bike everywhere. And, and so it was no, no, you know, accident that I, that I rode my bike every day. It was because the people who designed the city, designed the city to make it safe and convenient for me to ride my bike. It's also flat as a pancake, which is not as, you know, not too much unlike Costa Mesa being on a mesa and all that. And then the other thing is, I think we need to think about, because one of the constraints that we have here, I don't think we've talked too terribly much about it, but if you compare it to Playa Mesa it to Playa Mesa and Irvine Spectrum, we do have a limited ingress and egress as compared to those communities. I was just kind of counting that, and that is a constraint that we have. So how do we address that constraint to create some of the additional housing opportunities that have been discussed by Jeff and Manuel? And, you know, there's alternative transportation models and things that we should think about. One of them we're actually thinking about, for the benefit of the public, I'll tell you, we're in the process of, of applying for a grant of a thing called CIRCIT. And Arlis and I have met with the team at Kurt Pringle and Associates, I think is working on that. And CIRCIT is a deal where we will have, we're getting, trying to get a grant, and for a period of two or three years, I think, we would commit to having electric vehicles that would go around in specific areas, like, let's say, downtown or whatever. It would be free to seniors and a nominal cost for other residents and, and provided by the city through this grant funding to get people around the city. And I think that that would be good. And then, you know, in Mesa del Mar, where, you know, represented by, by Andrea, they're crazy about golf carts. They've got golf carts all over there. So maybe, you know, we look at, we say, in this community, are there ways that we can use alternative transportation, build it for bikes, build it for golf carts, and have people really get around it in, in kind of next generation ways?
Tricycles.
Was that?
Tricycles.
Tricycles. Why not?
I want to give everyone who lives there a tricycle.
Even I can ride a tricycle. Okay. Anything else before we move on to the economic aspects of it? Which are, good luck to this, because some guy in Sacramento tried to explain this economic to me, and I, I, it was like boom, it just like bounced right off my hard hat. So, you gotta, it's tough. This is tough to understand this stuff. But go ahead, give it a try.
Well, the good news is, tonight, I'm not going to try and explain all the economics of the development of this project. Just, what we're looking at as we go through this process and try and bring you along for the ride. Yeah, I really, can you hear me okay the way?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you.
Just talk quickly about what we are actually going to do during the planning process, what we're looking at. And then talk about the affordable housing, who lives there, how it gets built, what it costs to build, and then look at the market rate side of it and what that takes, and who that developer would be that might be doing all of this, doing all of these things we're asking of them. So, next slide? So, you know, as we go through the process, we're in the midst of a market demand analysis. I know we brought up things for people to do within the community, and we are cognizant that we're looking at kind of what's the retail demand. You know, we don't want to put thousands of housing units here and then tell everybody, okay, you know, you need a gallon of milk, get in your car and go. But, at the same time, as we've talked about with the ingress and egress, we don't want to say to half of Costa Mesa, when you need a gallon of milk, come here. Because we don't want to, you know, encourage all those trips. So it's trying to get that balance of, of non-residential uses that complement the residential uses without overpowering them. So that's part of what we're looking at in the market demand analysis, and that's, that's part of what we're doing at the moment. We're then going to look at the financial feasibility analysis, and that's a little bit of what I'm going to try and talk about tonight, because at the end of the day, we can throw a huge wish list of things in there, but it only happens if it's feasible, if it can, we can make the numbers work. And look at, we'll be looking at funding and financing sources. So how do we pay for some of these things we're looking at? And then a final note, and I'll touch on this a little bit later, too, is kind of the current market conditions. You may have heard about this inflation thing we've had for a few years. Interest rates that now nobody can, well, I'm not, I'm not sure if nobody can afford the mortgage on a house, or if everybody with houses doesn't want to lose their cheap mortgage to go buy a new house, but we've got problems. But we're really looking at something, you know, in a perfect world, a perfect world, we'd be four years from now, before we're actually seeing stuff go on the ground down there. So it really will be a different world. And so as we go through this, we want to think ahead as best we can. And, you know, the way it is today, the expectation is, we're going to have higher interest rates than what we had pre-COVID, but not as high as now, that, you know, that higher interest rates are a fact of life going forward. So we're going to try and, and, and work through that future as we look at this plan, not just my part of it, but all of it, the housing products, everything else. What's that market going to be four years from now? Next slide? So let's talk a little bit about affordable housing. This is a, the picture is an affordable housing project, the Orion in the city of Orange. It just got awarded low income housing tax credits this year, so that's why I use it as an example. It's not, it's not on the ground yet. But when we look at building affordable housing, it's very different than the market rate housing. I call it an art. It's a real art what the affordable housing developers do. A big chunk of what they do is low income housing tax credits. Those are federal tax credits. The federal government gives them to the state of California, and every year, the state of California says, okay, we have these, who wants them? And they get a bunch of applications. And it is the primary vehicle for building affordable housing in the country, and especially in California. And it can take three years to get low income housing tax credits. They rarely get awarded the first year they applied for, some in the second year, most of them in the third year. So an affordable housing developer is trying to hold on the ability to use a piece of land and hold on to maybe a little bit of money from the county and a little bit of money from a charitable organization. Just wait, just wait, these tax credits will come. It's an art to put all of that together. So this one in Orange, it's 164 low income units that they'll build, 101 and 2 bedroom units, the average size of 600 square feet, and it's a $57 million project. So, next slide? So this is the source of their funding. As you can see, a third of it is tax credit equity. That's the tax credits that they had been awarded by the state. There's also a big chunk that's coming from conventional financing. So I'm going to talk about in the next slide, the residents in affordable housing, they're paying rents, and some of that rent money is used to pay a conventional bank financing that helped build the affordable housing. And then there are all of these other pieces. About a third of the fund, funding has to come from a variety of sources, and that variety is different on every single project. And that's why I call it an art. They gotta get commitments from all of these other people and get them to hold on to their commitment for two or three years while they try and get their housing tax credit. So it, it's not easy building affordable housing. Okay. So who is eligible? Now, this table comes from your housing element, so hopefully it's, it's, it's not a mystery. When we're talking about affordable housing and affordable housing projects, what we mean is that the households who live there are not going to pay more than 30% of their household income for housing cost. Now, that housing cost, a big chunk of it is rent or a mortgage payment, but it's also the utilities. And if it's a homeownership opportunity, that 30% also has to cover their property taxes, their insurance, if they're in an area with an HOA or a community facilities district, all of that has to come out of that same 30%. So I do like to write everybody that one of the benefits is that for those households, that frees up the 20 or 30% of their income that they're probably using today for an unsubsidized housing unit. So that's money for medical care, groceries, spending money within their community. So there is that benefit that does come with affordable housing. Next slide? And really, who is eligible? So these are the current numbers for Orange County, where the area median income is $127,000. So the cutoff for low income for a four-person household in Orange County is $114,000. So a lot of people don't realize just what low income means. And moderate income, which is part of the puzzle, part of the housing that, that we're looking at providing on the site, that goes up to $153,000 for a family of four. So, and I apologize, you probably can't read it too well, the right side of this. Bridge Housing did a survey of the residents of all their affordable housing projects and asked what their occupation was. So you can see some of the occupations here, everything from accountant to retail sales to cosmetologist, dental assistant. This is quite a variety of people that work in Costa Mesa. You know, these are a lot of the jobs that we have in Costa Mesa. I say "we," I, I probably should have said that, I'm a resident of Costa Mesa. So that, so I am a "we." It's not a figure of speech here. So, you know, when we're talking about the affordable housing component here, we are talking about people who, there's a likelihood they are working in Costa Mesa, or could be working in Costa Mesa. So, next slide? And so, so how does that work out? Once we subtract out utilities and property taxes, you know, a moderate income household of four could be paying up to $3,500 a month rent, and that would be deemed affordable. Now, that's the top end of that spectrum. For low income, it would be $2,500. And if we're talking about purchasing, you know, the cutoff for a low income household would be a $309,000 house, housing unit. So, and this is all of Orange County, where it wasn't just reported, I guess our median sales price is over a million now. So that's what we're looking at, is a million dollar median house and maybe a $300,000 purchase price. There's a lot of ground to make up for there when we are talking about homeownership, but we are looking at homeownership as one component of this project. So now we'll move on to the other side of the coin, which is the market rate developer. Have you all had one of these developers? Stand before you at one of the lecterns and tell you how great their project's going to be. When we talk about the market rate developer, different from the affordable housing developer. And whether they're doing a, you know, multifamily rental project, or single-family housing or condos, they all start with a construction loan. I haven't looked lately, but I think a couple months ago, the construction loan rate was 10%. That's astronomical. It makes it very hard to build anything right now, today. Luckily, we're looking a few years down the road when that'll be cheaper. But the developer can't just borrow all the money they need for the project. They have to bring cash to the project. And so as we go through this, we talk about this as their equity investment. And I'm going to talk a little bit, because that developer that comes in and talks to you, the majority of that equity investment usually isn't theirs. They're putting cash in, but they have other people they need to get cash from to make all this work. So they gotta get a bank, they've got to get equity investors, they've got to make the neighbors happy enough that they don't complain to you and make it easier for you to say yes. They have to satisfy you. As they come in here, they've got, you know, loads of development standards, they're really, just like the affordable developer, trying to balance a lot of balls as they go through this process. And if it's a rental product, once, if it's a for-sale project, once they're done, they sell it, they get their return on investment, they walk away, they're done. If it's a rental, they need to get a permanent loan to pay off that construction loan, collect those rents every year, pay that off. And then there is a return on investment. So we'll talk a little bit about that. The next page. All right, the next slide. So this, this slide, the next one, this is just completely made up off the top of my head, but having worked with projects. The blue represents what we might see as the equity investment needed for a residential development project. And the orange, the bottom one, is the amount of the construction loan. So the bank will say to the developer, yeah, we'll lend you money, we think you know what you're doing, and who wouldn't want to invest in Costa Mesa? So sure, we'll, we'll lend you, but we're not going to lend you the whole thing, because if you do mess up, we want to be able to take, take it back from you and sell it, and probably sell it at a discount. So that's why they need that equity investment. And if you look at the hatched area, that represents the return on investment. So part of the return on investment is the interest on the construction loan. The bank is also going to get a return on its investment. And if you look in the blue area, that's the return that goes to the developer. So when we talk about return on investment, we're talking about just that blue bar. We're talking about the money the developer put in and what's their return on that. So if we say a 15% internal rate of return, we aren't saying we had a $100 million project and the developer's walking away with $15 million cash. We're saying we had $100 million, the developer put in 10 million, and they're getting a return on that, 10 million. So that, that is a difference, a lot of time, when we hear what the numbers are that we need to achieve on a return on investment, it's based on the equity, not the overall cost of the project. Okay. This is also a very simplified illustrative timeline of how it works out. On the left, six-month entitlement process, I think developers would love to have six months to entitle a project, but before it's entitled, they're not getting a construction loan. Everything they spend is coming out of their pocket. Once they get entitlement, they may borrow 50% of the cost for the land and put in their cash for the other 50%. That's, you know, once it's entitled, they can start drawing on that construction loan. And then they've got all this months of work doing site work and doing construction. And every month, they're drawing down that construction loan a little more and putting a little more of their cash into the project. And then we get towards the end, and they start selling their residential units, and that cash is coming in, but it's not their cash. They gotta pay the bank back first before they get to keep the cash. So you don't see the blue lines on the top, which means money coming in until the very end. And that's the reality the developer faces. That's the reality, that there is risk that market conditions will change, that the economy goes down, the economy goes up and interest rates go up, that everything, they had this model for what they were going to do, changes. There is that risk that's inherent in there, that the longer that process is, the more risk there is. And so when we talk about a 15% internal rate of return, it reflects the risk that that money won't, they won't get to the last, when they get to the last two months, there won't be as much of that money there. And if they do a great job, maybe there will be more. There is an upside.
So this is a, it's, I think it says, it says "sales," but is this illustration for a project that is a for-sale product, or?
This is for-sale because it's a little easier to explain. So if it is a res, a rental project, they would get to the end, take out a permanent loan, pay off the construction loan, and then, every month going forward, as rents start coming in, they're making payments on that permanent loan.
Got it. Got it.
They're getting some money for the operations and maintenance, and they are getting a little bit of return. So a term you'll hear sometimes is cash-on-cash yield. You know, what's the cash? Once they're operational, what's the cash flowing into the developer's pocket based on the cash they put in the deal to make it work in the first place?
Cash-on-cash yield.
Yeah.
This is, by the way, this is one of the best things I've seen.
Oh, well, thank you.
It's really good. And I know it's compressed, but the stages and the idea of debt and equity and return on investment, I don't think anybody's explained it to us quite like this. So I really appreciate it.
So I want to go back to that equity thing real quick. So the developer that comes in here, on a small project, it might be all their money. On something the size of the Fairview Developmental Center, that developer, whoever wins that, is probably going to private equity firms. They're going to what the SEC calls a qualified investor. And I forget the details. I think it's a household income of $500,000 or more per year for the last two years. Because they can say, "Give me your money, and I promise I'll give you money down the road" without going through everything a public corporation does. They can't offer it to anybody else if they're not a qualified investor. So those investors, they have money. And they say, "Okay, I've got this cash that came in from my last project. Where am I going to invest it?" They're looking for a return. The developer who comes in here may honestly believe in putting in the bike trails and the connections and making a great place to live, but they also have to bring along the people who are bringing cash to the table. And a lot of them are just looking at that return. That's just an investment for them. And they may not even know where Costa Mesa is.
So when we were in Sacramento, and maybe Loriann can elaborate on this and give you a better question. But one of the guys from the Department of General Services, Jason Kenny, said, "Look, for various reasons on Fairview Developmental Center, the state is going to have to donate the land." They're not going to get anything from the developer, having to do with the level of affordability that we're planning and also the extent of the demolition and remediation that is occurring there. Do you, and you have obviously here, land acquisition costs and so forth and so on. Do you have any comments on that? Do you concur with that? Did I get that basically right, Loriann?
Well, I think you might have looked at my next slide already. We were just going to come back to all of that. Yes, so there's a lot of cost here. So what the state wants to do is, October of next year, go out to the world and say, "Give us a bid on what you think you can pay for our property." They want to select a master developer. Now, for that master developer, they're going to buy buildings that there's a cost to demolish. There may be asbestos that needs to be cleaned up. There may be other contamination. I have no idea. They have to be worried about that. They're going to have to put in roads, interior water and sewer infrastructure. Then there are the things we've talked about with recreational amenities or, I don't even call a bike trail a recreational amenity. I live on one side of South East Plaza and work on the other, so I can easily bike to work, and I do it on the few days I go into the office anymore. But, you know, there is all of those costs. And we are going to be looking at, you know, rough order of magnitude, how do all these stack up? Put it in that timeline and say, you know, what does that come out of that? Because it's those market rate units that have to be able to fund that. We'll also be looking at state grant opportunities for infrastructure for low-income housing. You know, where can we look at pulling in some free money? But that's where it all has to balance out. And there will be trade-offs. And so the trade-offs may be, maybe we need taller, affordable housing units so that they take up less land so we can have more land for for-sale townhouses, because they get a lower density. But to get all that to work, there may be those trade-offs. We may come back to you and say, "You know, the trade-off is, we can do less affordable housing and keep the cap on the number of units." Or maybe we need to be looking at more units here and a little, you know, higher, greater number of story buildings. So we're going to be looking and having those discussions about what are those trade-offs to get the kind of community we want here? Because at the end, it's got to be paid for if anything's going to happen.
So Steve, while we're on the topic of costs, any affordability requirement essentially is a cost to that master developer. So how is that accounted for, if at all, in the land acquisition?
Yeah, so, I mean, there are a variety of ways that can do it. The most likely way, and I don't want to prejudge anything, I'm just guessing, that the master developer will, well, we will in the specific plan, lay out areas for affordable housing. And they will bring in an affordable housing developer, maybe several, because you may want one that's large families and one that's, you know, veterans. You know, bring in people. And they will probably give them that land, because the affordable developer's still got to go to all of those other sources and get the money to do the construction. So that is a constraint. You know, the question will be whether or not there is a cost for water, sewer, roads, and open space generated by the affordable housing that the market rate developer's paying for? Or are we getting grants to do that? Because it could be more than just the land to make it work. It's not cheap to build in Orange County.
Yeah, I mean, my biggest concern is the remediation. I mean, having toured the site, underground steam tunnels, asbestos, all kinds of crazy things, right? And so this question's actually for the city manager, obviously. You know, as the state is going through that master developer process, is there any talk so far from DGS or anybody else in terms of who and how that remediation gets handled?
Thank you, Councilmember Mar. No, we haven't gotten into that level of detail. I think we've had the conversations at a high level, especially when we were just talking about the complications of the site, given the historic buildings, given the existing roads, the lack of the utilities. So we've had those conversations, high level, very generally speaking. My sense is that they would be open probably to having more in-depth conversations about this in particular, because the site is complex enough that, you know, it may be more than just discounting the land to actually get that kind of an incentive. I mean, just the amount of infrastructure on the site is pretty formidable. And so I think they'd probably be open to that. It's lamentable that we no longer have redevelopment as a tool. I mean, this project would be perfect for tabs, you know, tax allocation bonds, property tax sharing agreements. And that might be something that we'll have to consider too in the future to reimburse a developer. But the economics of the site will be challenging for sure. I think, you know, we'll continue to have conversations with DGS on that and see if they'd be open to grants or some other funding mechanism or working with us on a specific type of financing that they could put into a trailer bill that might be similar to a tab. I've been thinking about different scenarios in my mind of how we could make this work with taxes and bonds, but other non-debt-related financing for a developer.
Yeah, I mean, look, for the developers in the audience, feel free to reach out to me and tell me if I'm off my rocker here. But with zero land acquisition costs and the ability to parcel out land specifically to 100% affordable housing developer and say, "You get that. Go do your affordable housing thing," and the rest being market rate, I guess I don't have a lot of concerns that we're going to be able to make something work there. The concern I have is on the remediation side. I mean, I think this could be hundreds of millions of dollars of asbestos cleanup that I don't know that anyone is going to be in a place to somehow bear as part of the construction costs that you just mentioned. So I'd like to see us potentially go back to the state and see if there's something we can request. I mean, we've been batting pretty good when it comes to making requests for some of our large infrastructure projects that we need help with. This is a pretty significant one. And then secondarily, that, look at bond options and other things. But I struggle to see how this works with a ginormous remediation bill hanging over our heads.
Also, I agree with what Andrea just said, but it seems also speculative to me. I could definitely agree with her that it's $100 million or it could be $25 million. I don't have a clue. So I think it would be really helpful to see if the state, I mean, I think, or maybe we put it as part of our budget. I don't know. Or get more money for it. To do some testing and find out exactly what's in these buildings. Just to give us, so we can ballpark what the remediation and demo cost is so we're not just, like, pulling a number out of the sky.
Yeah, and I think the reality of it is that in October next year, when the state asks for bids, I think what they're going to hear is, "We're not ready to bid until you've done that basic research on what the remediation, what level of remediation is necessary and the cost."
So let's do it now.
Yeah.
Not us, we can't afford it, but I mean, the state can afford it.
The state should address the big issue because the governor claims to be so for housing, right? Real quickly, one thing I just want to note. I think the whole council is making some excellent points here. I just want to make sure we're not capping ourselves with a number. So if, you know, we have to have more, I think Jeff called it communal or community building, let's not limit ourselves, especially considering the fact that there's a lot of unintended costs that we're not entirely sure about, such as remediation. So, you know, the amount of units shouldn't be capped, in my opinion. And secondly, and I said it in just a bit, but I do want to see the governor put his, you know, actually step up and help us build housing. I know he's going really hard on us with the housing element in other cities, but we need actual help, not just zoning.
Well, this time you write him a letter, because it didn't work very well last time. And I wrote him a letter. All right.
If I...
Are you about ready to wrap up?
Yeah, I was just going to wrap up with two more comments here. One is the affordable housing piece, those low-income housing tax credits, that's for low and very low-income folks. So those portions of the project wouldn't include moderate income. So we still need to look at where there's the moderate income. And does the master developer do that akin to an inclusionary housing project where they're mixing it in? Or are they trying to bring another partner in? Because funding that is very challenging. And then the last part is the homeownership aspect of this. So I ask all the affordable developers we talked to, and none of them have done ownership housing, because everything that they get funding for has that low and very low income cap. And so for a household, say a moderate-income household that qualifies, they have to have a down payment and they have to have a credit score. They have to qualify for a mortgage just like every other person who buys a house. And consistently, what we see is there is a pool of households that have the credit scores, that, you know, show the willingness to pay. And it's trying to piece together the money for a down payment. That makes it very difficult. So for the market rate developer who might be building the moderate-income housing, it's not just the difference between the market rate price and the affordable price, but then they are probably writing that price down even further to offset the down payment requirement. So it is a lot of moving pieces to try and accomplish all of these things here.
I have a quick question. When you're talking about homeownership versus renting, can you tell me what the interest rate is on renting? I can tell you. It's 100%.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Versus everyone complaining about seven. So if you want to create a goal and your goal is to rent, then just count on paying 100% interest on whatever it is you have. There's no investment there. You're investing for someone else. All you're doing is putting a roof over your head. And that's fine, but think long-term. Because eventually, you want to own a home. And that's what we should be thinking about if we're going to think about this long-term.
Yeah. And I was only bringing that up because that's part of that, and we have a thing here about trade-offs as we go through this, these trade-offs. So if we're accommodating however many moderate-income households and we want to do homeownership, that's still a bit more of, you know, what has to come out of that market rate housing piece, which is fine. And we want to explore that as we go through, because I think that's the value judgment that gets put into the final specific plan. This is what we want, and this is what we're willing to trade off to make that work.
Sorry, can I just respond to that quickly? So there's actually a really good series of maps in the New York Times at some point in the last week that's showing where it actually financially makes sense for people across the country to rent versus buy. And, you know, in California, so much of homeownership is so out of reach, makes sense to rent. But then as you sort of got farther east, it made sense to buy in a lot of places. In Nebraska, you can still buy a two-bedroom, two-bath for $200,000. And it was showing how that has changed in just the last five years, where actually, you know, now it is more and more out of reach in California, but increasingly also out of reach in Nebraska, where it used to be $150,000 and the prices increased so much and salaries have not kept up. So I guess I would just gently push back on Lauren a little bit in that that's great that homeownership is important. It is just financially out of reach for so many people. And incomes are not keeping up with how much it costs to own. If we want to create ownership, that just means that we are subsidizing it more. And that subsidy has to come from somewhere. To your point, it's got to come from the market rate rentals. But unless we've got a more robust program, sorry, robust, unless we've got a more developed program by which to subsidize ownership, I just don't see how the math works. And it's just a question of how much people make versus how much it freaking costs to buy. What I will say, and what I've been curious about, is so-called, like, naturally occurring housing that's slightly cheaper. And so I think, you know, one of the things that we didn't cover when we went over all of the various kinds of housing is the, I guess you did with the flats a little bit, right? But like, how do we get, you know, you did with the flats a little bit, right? But like, how do we get, you know, the studio that's for sale, the bungalow, that, maybe at least start there, if we're talking about ownership models, that are not the full two-bedroom, two-bath with a yard. But if we're going to look at any kind of ownership, can it be scaled such that it might be within the realm of affordability? My other thing, just before I completely forget, is on mixed use. So I feel like I've seen, I talked to an affordable housing developer not that long ago, about, you know, how come we never see shops on the bottom, affordable housing up top? We kind of went through the numbers, and there was no way it penciled, right? Those retail shops do not throw off enough profit for it to be worthwhile. But I'd be curious, with a master plan development like this, with the mixed use or with market rate, is there a point at which any mixed-use kind of pencils, you mentioned at the very beginning of your talk, trying to do some amount of trip capture? So that's just a thing that I'd like to understand better. Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to just throw in my two cents on this whole rent versus own thing. You know, like, what you put up, you put up the slide, I don't know where it is, but it says even with the moderate income, which is $154,000 a year, to pay a reasonable housing burden, you would buy a house, and I think you said, like, $347,000 or something like that. And that's just, that's a bike on era, right? So it's just not, and it's not coming back. And when we talk about the interest rates being high now, I think we have to put it in a long historical context, as I played around with when we were talking about population, is the interest rates that we're seeing now, over the last 60 years, are about what they have been, on average, for 60 years. The interest rates we've experienced from 2010 through, basically, part of 2020, for about 10 years, were artificially suppressed interest rates to get us out of a severe recession. And then, of course, the ones, then when it came up, it was to address, and then they, you know, then they went dipped down a little bit during, you know, stayed there during COVID, low during COVID, and then they went up to address inflation. Again, you know, to make the Fed making a point. So, I mean, I think that while the interest rates may go down, they're not going to go down. And we don't really want them to go down to where they were from 2010 and forward, because that was a reaction to a terrible, way worse than the pandemic, recession that we had for a longer, deeper period of time that affected every sector of the economy. So, you know, don't pray for that. That's, that would be a financial disaster. It may affect home prices, I guess, in a way, because the home prices would plummet. But I don't think anybody here wants home prices to plummet either. And we wouldn't get elected if we were trying to achieve that. So the other thing, so I just don't think, and it's just like, so I was at a thing yesterday for the Real Estate Realtors Association for Newport Beach, and the president of the California Association of Realtors was there. And she's the California thing, you know, she's every 56 counties. And she said, she just did a presentation, she was installing the officers locally, and she did an installation in Siskiyou County, but in where Lake Shasta is located. And you can buy a home in Siskiyou County for $150,000 in California. You could buy a home in Detroit, Michigan, for $75,000. There's vacant homes that they're damn near giving away in Detroit, Michigan. So there are, as Andrea says, there are places in the country where we can achieve affordable ownership opportunities. The reality is, that's not coastal California. And it's not like we can do anything with Fairview Developmental Center or our general plan that's going to really address that. The people that are buying homes, owning homes in Costa Mesa, are homes where they're provided a tremendous amount of equity from their parents or their grandparents who die, or people that move, or the people that move into the community from another community. For example, they don't like it in San Francisco anymore. They want to move down to Orange County, or something like that. The idea that we're going to have somebody, I mean, I just hate to, I hate to be a naysayer, but I mean, I'm trying to be realistic. The idea that because of this thing that we're doing, we're going to allow people to do what I did in 1991, and get out of law school, save for two years, get a nice little down payment, put it down, and, you know, it's just not, we're not going to make it happen. So let's not spin our wheels on it. And by the way, if anybody from the Planning Commission is listening, don't spin your wheels on it. Okay? And as for the thing about 100% interest, you know, we all know, if you look at an amortization table, most of your payment is going to interest for years and years and years before you ever pay down principal. So it's not that much different than paying rent. That's all I have to say about that. Anybody else?
Except for if you own, you gain equity, whether you're paying a lot of interest or not. And if you own, over time, you have equity that you can use to reinvest or rent the property out that you have. So I'm not trying to create an argument here, but I'm just trying to make a point. We're spending a lot of time on just rentals, and I would like to see us look for solutions for home ownership, too. That's all.
All right. So are you just talking about market rate for-sale homes, or are you talking about affordable for-sale homes? I just want to be clear.
I'm talking about home ownership versus rental. That's all I'm talking about.
Okay, so you want to throw into the mix for-sale homes at market rate?
If we're going to develop places to live, how many of them are going to be given an opportunity to own these properties? How many? What are we doing for that? We're doing a lot for rentals. Okay, fine, we put someone in a rental unit. I'm not saying I'm against it, but what are we doing to provide home ownership for people? That's my question.
I guess there's a difference between providing home ownership for people and...
Are we providing rentals? We sure are. I got a whole line of people here telling me how we're going to provide units for renting. And what I'm saying is, we should also be providing opportunities for home ownership.
At what price point, Lauren?
I don't create the price point. The market does.
I know, but what would you say would be, what would be a price point that you think would be a good thing that we should try to achieve? I'm not arguing...
We should create another panel on it. I'm not the one who's creating the panel, but we have one that does one for renting. Let's do one for owning.
Right, I mean, I'm not arguing with you, but I mean, I'm trying to understand whether, you know, the extent to which it's feasible. Because if you're saying that there could be, we should have a price point at, you know, $350,000, I don't think that that's feasible. Saying we should have a price point more like at $800,000 or something like that, that might be...
Well, you just said, let the market decide. So in that case, it's going to be 1.2, 1.3. Is that what we're trying to create? More 1.3 million dollar homes? Is that what we need more of in the city?
I don't know. That's a good question. Why don't we do a study on it?
Well, given that we're 60% renters, and 50% of the population is an extremist in some way because of their current living condition, I would argue that there is no one in this room who would claim that the thing that we're missing is 1.3 million dollar homes.
Okay.
That was a robust discussion. Anybody else?
I'll just add.
Arlos.
I think it's a value, so you're hearing, I think, a value around wanting to create affordability, period, right? A lot of the discussion is affordable housing. I think we've expanded that maybe to affordable living, right? Can we create spaces where people don't have to have the expense of having a car, for example? This is our time to think really broadly, right? What solutions are there? I always believe there's a solution to something, to entry-level affordable ownership for Costa Mesa residents, right? And I've been sitting here thinking about all the presentations I'm seeing about what drives up the cost of housing. You talked a little bit about that. I know that one of the big drivers of housing costs is all of the space that has to be allocated for garages, for example. And so if we know that, you know, 20-plus percent of our population doesn't drive, older, you know, driving age population doesn't drive, let's not force that cost into all of this housing. Maybe that's a solution. I've got friends, this is, you know, not in Orange County, but who live in cohousing arrangements, which has found other ways to reduce costs of housing by having more shared amenities. So I'd be interested in the exploration of housing strategies like that, that remove a lot of the built-in costs that are sort of natural in our very young region of Orange County, but that work really well to take some of those costs out. So encourage you to think creatively on all of the different ways to address the many housing challenges we're trying to solve for. Thanks.
Okay.
Karen, did you want to wrap up with our next steps, and then we'll finish up?
Yes, sounds great.
Real quick, our next workshop is either for the end of January, beginning of February. I described earlier what we're going to be covering here. I'm putting up the website for you all, so that you can come check it out. And to sign up for notifications, this is for the general public, please send an email, and you will be included on our list. Next slide. Just real quickly, I wanted to hit all our project deliverables. We've got our vision and guiding principles, market study, existing conditions. Aside from just doing a traditional existing conditions report, we're doing something online using Story Maps. So it's going to be very graphically intense and very narrative in its description. Look, you can look for that come January. We're moving forward with three land use plan and circulation plan alternatives, coming up with a preferred plan. Then we'll be diving into our environmental, starting off with the project description, moving forward with drafting the specific plan itself, which includes these components, and then, at the same time, working on the EIR.
So I think that concludes our presentation for this evening. I just wanted to take a moment as we wrap up to thank my team and our consultant team. A lot of times, I get to do the presentations up here before council, but really, it's a team effort. Scott Drapkin, Sherri Vander, Jason and Paivon, Nathan Wong C. here tonight, have been very, very involved in every step of the way. So I want to thank them. And then thank you, Karen, and your team from Placeworks.
Yes, on behalf of the council, thank you very much. Thank you for the public for hanging in there with us. Thank you for council for a really good discussion. A lot of great points. Regent.